Good evening, I'm Pam Sawyer for SLIFN and I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order at
7:28.
7:28. We have Chapin Cavanaugh as our recording secretary this evening.
And computer tech extraordinaire. At this point, I would like to say that we usually begin this meeting with suing the flag, so if you all please rise.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
So at this point, in the call to order, I just want to say that there are a few additions to the agenda and make the corrections now. And we have 5B under the FY21 budget report, and we will be adding the 8B to that report for that this evening. 7C, which is Consider and Act Upon Being Able to Vote Via Zoom. I think that's been corrected since I had this note.
It's on there.
We have, which was not on the original agenda, and we have added under 9, 9A, the monthly report by Mr. Rupert. We have added 9D under Other, which will be covering resolutions for the student activity account and the proclamations of resolution for Bruce Munson. And 7B, discretion and possible action on the heritage farm master site plan. That will be moved to the August meeting as we are awaiting the printed version of the master plan for the farm. So I know it's going to look a little confusing, but we've had those changes come up and so we have public comment. And I would ask, if you're going to speak this evening, would please give us your name and your address? And we'll give everyone a chance to speak first, and then if there's something else, we can have you speak a second time if there's something that comes up. The board does not interact under public comment. This is your choice to have your voice heard, but we do not interact with you. We don't get into a debate. We don't, but we take in all, under consideration, everything that you've said. So at this point, with a great gathering here, the same, thank you for your patience. Who would like to speak first?
Johnny Ance, Love and Cook Drive. And we're here tonight to talk about trying to create noise ordinance for the town. We have initially done it in the neighborhood, but town doesn't have a noise ordinance that can be enforced and acted upon. And we feel it's proper to get them installed. Part of the reason for this is that there has been some noise levels created unintentionally when they were had, but still created that need to be rectified somehow to meet certain situations. Okay, and basically, we'd like to get that on the status. Ronnie, you know what I'm saying?
You guys want to plug a place? Do you want to say? All right, then.
Hi, Ron Boden, 2 Cook Drive in Bolton. I'll give you what I'm gonna say. This is about noise and discharge of firearms within the neighborhood. Okay, I'm here tonight with some of my neighbors to express our concerns of the discharge of firearms in our neighborhood. All of us in the neighborhood have experienced the loud flap of gunfire, all too often within the last several months in our residential area. Whether single, double, or multiple shots, over 200 shots fired in the evening within two hours last Friday. Okay, over 200 shots is unacceptable in what was once an area of serenity and tranquility, which is what a residential zone was intended for. I have contacted the D, connected DEEP, environmental engineer, the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection, our resident state trooper, and other sources. There are many noise statutes regarding noise standards. I have recorded sound pressure levels and EBA for many of the firearm destroyers. They show levels that are 10 times over the allowable decimal level set by the state. And I have, I live approximately 600 feet from the property line where these shots are being fired. There are over a dozen homes in our neighborhood that are much closer than I am. That means they are experiencing noise at a much higher level than 10 times what is allowed. We request that selectmen immediately investigate creating an ordinance that will end the excessive noise created by gunfire that disturbs the peace and tranquility of the residents of the town of Bolton, which is our right. The town of Wyndham has created their own ordinance. There are over 60 towns in the state of Connecticut that have their own municipal ordinance. The state says, basically, you can have any ordinance you want, as long as it's greater than that of the state. So if you're going to put a PB level, the state says no more than 65 dB in the residential area. We, as a town, could reduce that because we can't have anything over 45, whatever we do as a selectman. Whatever you create as the ordinance would be the new rules regulation. This is a section from the Wyndham, which is interesting because our state troopers and some of the environmental issues have difficulty enforcing any of the noise regulations. In the 1970s, they created many statutes about noise. Unfortunately, soon after, they were defunded. So there is no sound pressure level needed available in the state of Connecticut. There is no training in using sound level meters in the state of Connecticut. Our enforcement agents, our state troopers, don't have the tools, they didn't have given the tools, to go down, investigate, and then execute whatever statutes are available. So if it says you have a discharge of a weapon, I take out my meter, I measure it. It's over the limit. You cannot do that. And there are fines that are applicable for doing that. Sometimes charge $250 out for the first one. But this is what some of the ordinance says in Wyndham. And this is how they got around not having to have a meter available. Okay, so this is it. It is found that, this is from the town of Wyndham, the town council, and it's called the Noise Ordinance of the Town of Wyndham. It is found that excessive sound and vibration, the harmful quality of life and the health, safety, and welfare of persons living, residing, visiting the town, in that excessive sound and vibration adversity affects sleep, habits, effectiveness to duty, work, study, and personal affairs. Adversity affects commerce, business, and pedestrians, and adversely affect the use and enjoyment of public areas such as streets, by rocks, parks, and other recreational lands and areas of the town. And it is found that persons residing within the town of Wyndham should enjoy an environment free of excessive sound and vibrations. And it is found that a substantial body of science and technology exists by which excessive noise may be sustainably abated. And it is found that excessive noise must be controlled by ordinance to protect, preserve, and promote the public health, safety, and welfare. Okay, then the Washington State's reference statutes, which play. And this is the last part of it. Except there's provided, like two parts, this ordinance, it shall be unlawful for any person to make or cause to be made any loud or unreasonable noise. Noise shall be deemed to be loud or unreasonable when it disturbs, injures, or endangers the peace or health of another, or when it endangers the health, safety, or welfare of the community. Any such noise shall be considered to be a noise disturbance and a public nuisance when it is audible by a person of normal hearing at a distance of 100 feet or more feet from a property line within which the boundary line is the source of the noise. So what they're saying is, if you're 100 feet away, my neighbor decides to shoot off a gun, and if I'm 500 feet away or 800 feet away, and I say, my God, that's awful. It has to be investigated and then executed upon. My feeling is that the noise is too loud. And the town of Wyndham had executed this. It was under the approval of the DEEP, and it was accepted. As of July 1st this year, it is no longer required that you get approval from the DEEP. The board of selectmen, any municipality in the state of Connecticut, can issue its own noise ordinance. That's on July 1st this year, so that you guys know. So that's basically it. I think, the only thing I want to add is, let my wife play just a short video so you have an idea of what we're dealing with. And if you want more information, I'll be glad. I have recorded several disturbances over the last several weeks. My background is, I was a, in research and development practice for Cruxix. So I was in testing, and I was in data analysis. And I also was very instrumental in creating most of the app that we have today, that whole algorithm we spent years on the practice. And these new apps are extremely accurate, and even so, from the data I've taken, roughly, any day is different in Cruxix, because of weather and things like that. But I found that the discharge of weapons we've reported are basically 10 times louder than the acceptable, 10 times louder than the acceptable state maximum level. Because that's pretty severe. So when we're talking about, the state says no more than 65 dB in the residential area, he's up in the area of 70 dB. And DBs are a large scale, a large rhythmic scale, so 3 dB and 3 dB, 60 dB and 60 dB is 63 dB.
Say anything?
60, if I added your voice to my voice, and we're talking at 60 dBs, the total was 63. Because now, if we add four people, it's no longer, it's 60, it doubles every time. So by the time you get 10 dB louder, 10 dB louder is 10 times. It's like, it's a huge amount of difference. The power level that requires you to do that is huge. So do you have that?
I do.
This is what they're on our back deck, and I think it was on the Friday evening.
It was last Friday. Well, we had guests. Let's see if I have this.
We're the only ones with technical difficulties.
So we're having guests out on the patio. Having a happy hour. Here's just what we're hearing. It's just the same thing, but that's what we're hearing.
And we are 600 feet away from the property line, and noise rate is at 6 dB for every doubling of the distance. So if we were to go backwards, and we're measuring 6 dB, it's probably closer to 80 by the time it reaches the property line with the shots being fired. So this is an issue. If I'm experiencing that kind of noise 600 feet away, imagine the last house on our block, which is at the property line. They are getting extremely high dose of noise. So that's it for me, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your written presentation as well.
I'd like to stand. My name is David, and I've been here, oh, I'm sorry, did I?
Thank you, Dave. Hey, I have a second. Should we, should we, Chad Bowden, 2 Cook Drives. I'm sorry, say again?
Chad Bowden, 2 Cook Drive. I'd just like to add that our poor dog is blind and she's old, and we walked her up to the end of the, end of Cook Drive the other day, and she just about froze when she heard the gunfire. She was petrified, thought we were gonna have to carry her back home. But our animals are talking to us. Thank you.
Wyndham, 10 Cook Drive. So I also am speaking for the animals. My dog actually has to be on that prescribed sedatives for these loud noises. I have video of my dog just trembling and shaking every time we shot go off. It's just, it's just, I just think that's cruelty. Every day, my dog has to, has to, whenever this happens, very, very frequently. My dog is just a nervous wreck. I have to give him trazodone, which is a sedative, because he's just, I have video, you should see the way he trembles.
Thank you.
Stephanie Barrett, 7 Cook Drive. I didn't prepare.
Hi, Irene Schreub, 5 Notch Road Extension. I have two dogs, have a Scotty rescue, he's petrified of the shooting. I grew up around them. My husband, late husband was a Marine, went shooting every weekend, but you never have it in your backyard. It's too close to home. Forty, your life has been taken away from all of us. There's a lot of other people that are gonna come, they just can't handle this. They're emotionally destroyed.
Thank you.
Leslie Onvander, 1 page at Bolton Center Road. I came to support Ron and Deb and the rest of the neighborhood because I have been at their house with shooting was going on, and it's loud. And sometimes I do hear it at Bolton Center Road. But I think in consideration of what's been going on with all the killings at all, that we really have to think about how this can happen. When we first went to do camp and talked to state trooper about their problem, it was right after the slaughter in Tucker. And the state trooper said, protect them and arrest, and that was it. And I was, oh. So I'm here to see, you know, to support them and see, you know, and hope that at some point, something will be done.
Thank you.
My name is David Beauchamp, I live at 48 Notch Road. I came down just to, I wanted to hear what everybody had to say. I have nobody who's really contacted me or talked to me about it. Besides, I had been called the police a couple of times. I didn't know who it was. I never saw anyone on the neighborhood. So I just wanted to hear what everybody had to say and let everybody know that I'm open to talking about things or trying to, you know, think of something that maybe could be reasonable for everybody, and I try to hear everybody's hearing or come say anybody's thoughts. Is that why I should, you know? I even thought about trying to put, you know, more things in that in the sound. So I mean, I'll do the best I can to work with everybody. If you get all your contact information, if you like it, or maybe we can talk more and then we can try to figure something out. I mean, I think having an ordinance for the whole town just because of what's going on is kind of extreme. But it's, you know, I'm open to talk about it. I'm always wanting to hear what everybody has to say. Like, you know, I'm not, I don't want to be the worst neighbor ever, and that's not my goal, so.
Thank you, David.
Barry Sterns from 21 Cook Drive in Bolton. I've been in my home for 48 years in my neighborhood, and just some stuff that happened. Remember when the state of Connecticut decided to clear cut the 6 and 404 intersection? They took out all those trees? The noise a lot of our neighborhood went up and down. You still hear, you hear trucks coming down and going up. You think down your street, that's not it. Even now, in the summer, with all the weeds on our country, we still get that noise. This is much worse than that. I live 200 feet from the property line, and there's a burn, burn. I don't know if that's what the background, what you're hearing, is on the property line, but in my backyard, there's no burn. So like in my backyard, the noise is really big. My concern, when it first started with, I was thinking about city. So I looked up state stats, and the state is pretty much said, this is up to time. We're not gonna deal with this stuff. Then one, I forget when I was, one time I called, I called the trooper's office here, there's no beyond, just went right to dispatch. So I'm talking to dispatch in Bolton, and she's, she really talking about it. She said, well, she mentioned Second Amendment. Now, Second Amendment means you can have a gun, doesn't mean, doesn't cover what you can do with it. But, and then I said, well, who establishes the law or not? This is in a safe area, we're not doing this. Who's on there? And she said, to me, well, did any bullets hit your house?
Any what?
Did any bullets hit your house? Oh, whatever word she gave.
That was the dispatcher?
That was the dispatcher. That was the reply. So, you know, it's just bizarre. The noise level is, it's bad sometimes, it's not invalid at times. You probably find a good one.
Sometimes.
I don't know what's going on. I didn't know this, that I'm really concerned about state. I don't hope this thing, I'm ashamed because they said that. And somebody told me that the state trooper told them they had looked at it and it was being operated in the safe manner. But I don't know which way they're firing to. Yeah, I just, I don't know which way they're firing. And it's bizarre. On July 3rd, I was up in N. Fireworks just in the front of my house. And I came home at 10 o'clock at night, and a little after 10, the gunshot started, and went on for about a half an hour. He's at 10 o'clock at night. And we've got people on our street with little babies, and we've got kids, or our neighbors changed, they're young families. So, you know, I, maybe my kids, my little brother, they used to go and play in those areas. They would go down to the little creek, a creek in the park there, they go look something, and it goes on the way along the park. So kids, they're still, I don't, still don't, but kids can do that. I just, it's, it's, I mean, I'm not even moving. No, I'm, I'm gonna get carried out of it, because it's where I live, but it's his town, I'm not gonna leave you, no. But I, we literally have to shut all our doors and windows now. You don't really see that. We just shut them when it's starting, because you don't hear it much anymore. But I think the noise, you know, the other thing too is, there's, I look at the property, the car for this property, and they've got about seven and a half acres of, but there's a railway in the town, we're going right through the middle of the property. How many of yous aware of that? That's from when they were gonna be 34, the town, the state took that, and then they deeded it back to the town. So it's right through the middle of the property, that way. So I don't know if that takes away from the, from the.
Those parcels were deeded back. Those parcels were deeded back.
Deeded back to the town.
No, deeded back, supposedly deeded, there's supposed to have been deeded back to the button property.
Well, if you look at the Bobby button, it's just out of Bolton, that's all.
Yeah.
That's a piece of land.
Exactly. I think it's wrong.
Well.
I can see what, yeah, we'll check it out. We're not supposed to.
Yeah.
Sorry, Bear, I don't mean to, I'm not supposed to talk.
I'm more concerned with safety, and if you want to fire a weapon, fine, but not all day or not hours at a time. For the safety of the people. I don't want to go in to hit my house.
I mean, just so you know, the first, there was my privacy, this thing, I asked them to run a walk down and look at it to make sure it's not in the safe place. And it definitely is. We never, and I didn't hear the conversation, you know, and I, I.
Can you speak up just a little bit because of the?
Yes, I basically aimed toward, you know, our, our house, a hundred, that's the way your house, because I know it sounds like dumb, but it's just a really big ledge, basically. So it's all uphill, and then behind is all uphill. So there's, there's, just so you know.
That's why I hear better months.
Yeah. Just to say, this part of safety, okay, I understand.
What about the walking trail? Is there anything to do?
We'll, we'll come back, if that's all right, thank you.
I'm Dave McNerney, 19, Cook Drive. As an ordained minister, I can't get involved in taking sides here, but I did feel morally obligated that when I first heard the shots being fired, I just wanted to know the nature and the operation of the range. And I've now had two opportunities, once by indirect invitation, and once by direct invitation by Mr. Beauchamp. And for my own well-being, I've observed that it is a safe range. The direction it's pointed, the size of the earth and berm that is designed to catch the bullets. It looks like it was designed by somebody who, who had done it before. And I asked state trooper Diaz, who had been back there with me during the first visit, what he felt as to the construct of the range. And he said, it wasn't his opinion, this professional state police opinion, that it was a safe range as far as what Mr. Beauchamp, when he said that they shoot toward their house, they don't mean that they can see their house, but they mean that the direction of the bullets, in other words, you will not see a bullet fly down Cook Drive unless it's fired by somebody else. And that is my, it's my moral obligation to give you this observation. I'm not choosing sides. This man, Mr. Ron, I just called him Ron, his family has had me in this home. I love these people. I'm glad that we're together, talk like adults. I'm sorry about the circumstances. Mr. Beauchamp is a down-to-earth guy. I have observed him shooting safely. That's what I care about. Those who don't know, I am in the state guard. I do have a status as an RSO elect, meaning I've tested, but I've not been given certification. And so I'm something of an authority. As for the noise, I leave that to you wise people to figure out. That's why we elect you. That's your problem to decide if it's lawful or not. My concern was, is it a safe range? And to my professional and private observation, the answer is yes. And I just think that ought to be considered while we sort the solid as adults. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's go back, and we'll go around again for someone for one last comment, from people who would just speak. Ron?
Okay.
Your name again, just for the.
Johnny Ance, 11 Cook Drive. I would just like to say that I've lived on Cook Drive for 47 years. And my kids used to play in, and it was real jolly. The other night, we were driving up Notch Road, and that went off, and the firing started. And it was much, much less noise, right near your house, than it was on Cook Drive. Much quieter. It was almost muffled in comparison to what we hear down there on Cook Drive. I have three small, three smaller grandchildren. They come over on a regular basis, even on the weekends. And they are definitely afraid of that noise. They are scared they're coming into the house, into the house. Okay, so the issue, apparently, it sounds like it's a safe range as far as the direction the bullets are going. Doesn't sound like anybody could get hurt unless kids are playing in the woods and somebody doesn't see them, know they're there. Accidents happen like that. But the noise is a big issue, and it needs to be taken into consideration. Okay?
Thank you. Yep. Thank you. Ron, did you just want to add?
2 Cook Drive. I would like to see a quick solution, as quick as possible. We just cannot be doing this any longer. Everybody's suffering. There's no way to be down on the bus about it. That's why we're all here. And again, there would be more here if they had the time and the place and weren't so afraid of being whatever. But again, as quickly as possible, if you guys can come together, I'm willing, and I'm sure some of the other neighbors are willing to meet with you guys, not a month from now. That, that just won't be acceptable. It just won't put up with that. So we need some immediate resolution to this problem.
Yep. Would you just want to add?
No, I think I'm pretty good.
Wyndham, did you have anything? Or perhaps also, but Dave, do you want to speak again?
Jerry Barney, 21 Cook Drive. I came up here mainly to see if there was a safe issue, which apparently there is. And I understand that there are people's dogs that are disturbed by it, but I wouldn't give my opinion, you're not gonna like it. The noise does not bother me, or my wife, or my kid. I don't think it's allowed, personally. I'm entitled to it. You're not gonna like it. I'm not trying to start anything with anybody, but it's how I feel about it. So, you know, some people might be really bothered by it, but to me, it's not that weird.
Barry?
Not as well this guy, I have something else I want to talk about.
So let's stick with this one issue. We'll come back to Mr. Sterns. Is there anyone else? Last thing, did you, I didn't need to skip over to you, pardon. Okay, then we will change topics, Mr. Sterns. Okay, then we will change topics, Mr. Sterns.
On topic, I'm very short, 21, Cook Drive. The topic is the intersection of Knox Road and 384, Route 44. Um, I think it was maybe two or three years ago, we challenged the room with the D O P. And they had a plan to correct that intersection. They actually had a plan that they put together. And it involved cutting through the old quarry and cutting natural come up farther down so you could see the traffic coming off 384. There are those things, other things you were going to do to slow traffic down. Um, at that time, at the end of that meeting, I talked to one of the individuals. And he said, I said, you know, this is a great plan, you know, when are you going to get it done? And he said, we don't have any money to do it. So, I said, you spend a lot of money figuring out what you were going to do, but you don't have any money to do it. This made no sense to me at all. And then, so now with all this federal infrastructure money coming into the state today, I would like for the town of Bolton to approach the state D O P and say, hey, where's our cut and we're going to get this? They, they called that intersection a non-compliant. That's what the state D O P calls that intersection you go up, not, I do up. I myself, if it's 3 o'clock, between 3 and 6, I don't go out that way. I go up to the hill and go where I want, you know? When my kids were learning how to drive, they never could go out that way, never. And, I mean, if you've done that, I mean, I'm retired, I don't go out a lot, but, but it seems like almost every other time I go out there, they get sick to go and all of a sudden you see somebody coming on the corner of your eye and they're going 60, 70 miles an hour. So, they don't slow down at all. No, they don't slow down till they slam on a brake, until the traffic light, as the light that is red, starts to back up that far. Yeah, you know, and then you hit a brake screw and stop. I'd just like you, you people to approach the D O P and say, hey, when is it our turn to get this intersection corrected and get it done? Um, I mean, that's, it, it, who's part of my mind today that means? When they said they didn't have any money to do it, you know, but they spent all this money doing surveys and all this and figuring out whether they had to go on the heat. And their plan sounded a good plan, which is pretty rare for, you know, if they have a good plan. So, I do, I hope that you can be that long or at least get an answer about what you're going to do. I mean, how many million, million dollars we got from this, this project is probably up. Well, I'm guessing a million, two million dollars.
Seven, seven million plus, well, they got it.
That's the one now.
Thank you, thank you.
We've also recommended.
Bob, Bob?
I can't speak, I keep my mouth shut, sorry. I have to be poked every now and then. My apologies to all of you.
If we allow one, we have, we have other board members, then we could get a quite an exchange. And this is not a public hearing.
Yours for you.
Yeah, I know.
Barry and I have been seeing this number.
Last time, Jim.
Yeah, Johnny, I'm saying Cook Drive. Uh, there's two issues here that are very similar. One is exactly what Barry was saying, and I want to explain to you what happened to me last week. And I've had instances there before, close calls before, but none like this. I came out, I turned out towards the highway, there was a car stopped at the end of Knox Road, the line on the highway. I stopped behind it. I didn't realize at that point that somebody was coming up behind me, but this guy took off in front of me. Got out to the V between 6 and 44, right there, and he stopped. Yeah, but I didn't look and I didn't see anything coming, so I went. I looked up and he stopped. I had to stop quick. The guy behind me also took off, stopped and almost hit me. Then he went around me. As he was going around me, somebody came flying down the highway. We almost had a four-car collision. We just missed a four-car collision. It is a safe issue. Okay? And I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, maybe another time, if it's, we threw off another safe issue. Can't remember.
We'll get to it and talk for another time if that's better.
Yeah, fine.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming tonight, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like.
We won't be offended.
And sorry, you and Barry are in this delay.
Thank you for your patience as well.
And we have to give thanks to our.
Take me with you, take me with you. Thank you, Mr. Bowlin. Good night, guys. We're seeing now with the, with the rest of the agenda due to the hour, I'm going to ask if the board will accept postponing the approval of the minutes and we'll move it down um, uh, just before item 10. Would that be a consensus from the board?
I'll move that we postpone the, the minutes till the next meeting.
Okay, very good, I think we have a nodding of everybody, so that's what we will do, thank you very much, Lisa. Going on to number four, appointments and reservations, a reservation of Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson works for us in the Buildings and Grounds Department. He has resigned to take a job more to his liking with the town of Columbia. Um, he'll be able to use as C D L. He's now a member of their town.
Well, we'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for his service to our town and we wish that there had been a position form available, but there was not. So, thank you very much. Moving on to 4B, Veterans Commission, we terms dates and appointments. At the present time, I'd like to have you look at the forms that were submitted by Kathy Walsh, Barry Sterns, B A R R Warren.
Did I incorrect it? I'm sorry.
That's all right. And Paul Toomey. So far, we have others that have said they are going to apply or maybe stuck in a computer um, uh, email that was from a prior employee and so we have to find a way to extract that. But at this time, we'd like to, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept these three candidates.
How so?
Bob Moore moves, do I have a second? Mike Armita seconds. Any comments from any of the board members, Bob DiPietro?
Question, oh, Barry Sterns. He lists Air Force experience, 1975 or 75, um, 1965. How can it be same year?
65 to 69, I think it was.
Oh, I can't read.
I think it, I, I believe that it does say 65 to 69, I can see why you, you, I'm sorry.
I need better glasses.
No, that's all right. Uh, penmanship is always in question sometime with the handwritten applications. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Having said that, we have a motion on the table, is there any other further comment? Mike Armita? Mike Armita, do you have another comment?
Mike, you're muted.
Uh, Mr. Toomey had expressed his preference to be an alternate. Uh, can we appoint him as an alternate pending the completion of the uh, committee? Or should we make him a permanent, uh, full member? And if we have enough people, make him an alternate.
He did ask to be an alternate. Um, he did also ask how many people I had for the committee and I had told him just three. And he said, if at all possible, he would like to be an alternate, so.
Should we honor his wishes and hopes that we'll get at least one more person to be on the committee?
Budget passed.
Really?
All the way, yes. 853 to 430, 853 total votes, 438 yes, 415 no.
Came down to a couple.
415 no.
Thank you.
See, magic number.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody take a deep sigh of relief, having had that interruption.
Sorry.
Thank you, no, that's.
So, very good news.
Yes.
Thank you for the very good news, back to the.
You know, we, we can appoint Kathy and Barry as full members and, and Paul as, as an alternate. I think we'll be back next month, I know, with more, more individuals to fill that spot.
Did you say?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
amend the motion?
I'll amend the motion to appoint Kathy Walsh and Barry Sterns as full members to the Veterans Commission and Paul Toomey as an alternate.
It's okay with my second, with the change.
Everybody comfortable with that? So, I will ask for, if there's no further questions, I will ask for a motion. I guess I will ask for, to take a vote on that, that motion before us. All in favor, say aye.
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 Naively, at this time, we need to talk, uh, um, we might need to talk about term dates and appointments, other appointments. Um, it has been recommended that we have staggered term dates, uh, some being two-year and some being four-years so that they don't all come up at once. I've not, I've not been in a situation where there has been an establishment of a, a commission, so does anyone have a background in how we would establish who is a two-year and who would be a four-year?
Sure.
You, you, easily, we, yeah, it's, we appoint, we, we appoint them to whatever that slot is. So, if we, at first stating that this is the setup we're going to have is
budget.
For a staggered term, first go around, half, half of the appointees are for two-years and the other half will be for four-years. We decide which is which. And then generally, that's, best way to do that is ask the applicant.
Can we?
We're actually jumping on to six, the, the, um, the issue on 6B.
Hello?
Hold off on that, if you want to think about that for a few more minutes and we'll come down at 6B, we'll readdress it.
Pam, Pam, could I just comment on it real quick? Could we wait, why don't we just wait and see how many people we have and ask those people which they prefer two or four years so we can do it so that people are happy being on the commission? And if we have, we, the first thing we should decide is how many members we want on the commission and.
We'll be discussing that in just a few minutes.
Okay, okay.
Great, thanks. Reports and updates, properties and facilities report. Uh, gentleman on that committee, consider an act on 15 Vernon Road, blind driveway and possible speed limit sign. Uh, Jim, you want to bring?
So, yeah, I told you at the last meeting I would visit the location and give you a report for this meeting. I did visit the location, um, in fact, talked with the, the lady and gentleman today who lived in the location that requested the blind driveway. And I said, well, gee, I really didn't think that the driveway was hidden. I thought that as long as people were traveling at an appropriate speed, the driveway was pretty clear. And they did agree, especially now that, um, now that the town has been through with the mower and done the roadside mowing, they said it's much better. Um, but there is no speed limit sign visible as you enter Vernon Road from Route 44. There is one when you come off of Quarry Road onto Vernon Road. So, my recommendation is that we find an appropriate location and post the speed limit sign when coming into Vernon Road from Route 44. I don't, I don't have to have your approval.
No, you can just do it.
You appointed me as the local traffic authority, but it's nice to have your agreement.
I, I say yes.
Yeah, me too.
Is there anyone who disagrees?
Just because I can.
As another member of the board, ma'am.
I know.
I'll be close to it.
Furthermore, he's going to send it over to me and say, can you do this, so?
Yep.
Well, we got, we got several things we got to tell you. What we got to say. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Cemetery maintenance, Jim?
So, I mean, you know, we've talked about this a little bit, you know, Kathy and I have actually made a couple of field trips to go out and look at the mowers, the cemeteries. There were a lot of bumps in the road at the beginning and I think that, um, the landscaper has been pretty responsive to our, to our requests and questions. Uh, the only issue that we are working through with him right now is there's a section in his contract that says he can increase his rate based on the cost of materials. And he believes that, uh, his fuel cost is part of his material cost and has increased his monthly bill 10%. Uh, we've, we've refused to pay at this point that additional fee until he can demonstrate, um, that in fact, he's spending nearly $500 a month on fuel.
For our cemeteries?
Yes, actually, actually.
That, that, I, I, I find it hard to believe that he's using more than 10 gallons a month or 15 gallons a month just doing the cemeteries, let alone $500 worth.
Right, I mean, so our, the contract is, is, um, he's supposed to be mowing the cemeteries bi-weekly. But, you know, he's cemeteried twice a month. Uh, you know, he did explain his machine is a large machine, it's got a 40-horse mower, 40, 40-horse power motor. So, I mean, he probably uses a little more diesel than, you know, the, the average machines. Um, but I, I did ask him to provide us a spreadsheet that, you know, we would be willing to consider a reasonable cost increase for the cost of fuel, but I felt that just, basically, it looks like you just tacked on 10%, which is an astronomical cost.
Yeah, that's, that includes labor and everything else.
Right.
Yeah, no, that, that's an insane amount of money for mowing.
So, we, we had that conversation by phone just before I went away on vacation. Um, and he called Kathy back and said, well, no, I'm mowing every week. And I, I've not seen evidence.
No.
That he's been mowing every week, you know, and, you know, why, why would? Right, his contract says every two weeks, why would he mow every week? And, you know, I, I think, you know, Pam and Kathy and I have all been keeping an eye on the cemeteries. When they're mowing at this point, they're doing a pretty good job, but, but they're not being mowed every week.
No, I go by there daily and I always glance to the right as I'm going up the hill into the cemetery. And they're not getting mowed every week. I, I'd be surprised to say they're getting mowed every other week. I, they're, they're not doing a fantastic job. And I, I'd be adamantly opposed to giving them any increase in funds until they prove to us that they're using more than 10 or 15 gallons of gas or diesel a month there.
And that's, and that's what we've asked for. Um, so I, I, we, I did ask Kathy to, you know, get the, uh, to request the payment ready so that we could pay them what we agreed to in the contract and not a, not a dime more until, um, you know, they can demonstrate that there is some significant increase in cost.
Yep.
So, I don't believe there's any action required?
No, it's really informational.
I would like to just share that, that every two weeks it seems appropriate this season of the year, uh, but it was not in the spring, as we all know, when we're mowing our grass every four days.
Mm-hmm.
It was distressing around Mother's Day and Father's Day for people. Um, but they did do a nice job for Memorial Day. Uh, it's a very busy time, I'm sure for them, for all their mowing. But it was, it got overgrown quickly as this particular spring, as most are, it happened. So, at some point, I'd like to revisit perhaps the, the contract for spring mowing versus summer mowing and fall mowing, because it's a different growing pattern. And we have holidays at that time. So, thank you to everybody for listening to that. Um, and cemetery maintenance, uh, to add, the, the new flagpole, I think we reported before, has been erected. And it looks very nice, and I seen the flag at full staff and at half staff at Quarryville. And I'd like to recommend that we have a dedication on Veterans Day, uh, this fall. Uh, a small dedication for that flagpole. And we are looking forward to the signs coming in and that are the property signs for the Bolton Center Cemetery and the Quarryville Cemetery that will identify them, as well as the entrance and exit signs, uh, have been ordered and we're waiting for them to come in. Any other questions on the, on the cemeteries? Thank you. Uh, then we'll move on to B, item B. The budget report, the current budget, uh, AP report, which came in after we put the budget together. Uh, and do we have any questions or comments on the AP report? Adam, is that a question? I will take a motion to, Adam, I'll take a motion to accept the AP report.
Oh, so, all right, I'll move, I, it's actually not on, is it, was it added to the agenda?
Yes, it was. That was the first thing we did.
On mine? Um, I mean, I saw it, I saw that it was then, but it's not on the printed, that's all. I only see budget transfers for current budget.
When I went through the ads at the very beginning and the call to order, um, uh, I had added the AP, and would you like to make a motion that we add that to the report, to add that to the, um, agenda tonight, Adam?
Sure, I'll, I'll move that we add the AP report, night's agenda, under, uh, five B, subsection B. And, um, if you can't approve it in the same motion, you have to put it on the agenda first, so it needs a second.
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. And at this time, I'll take your second motion.
I move that we approve the AP report.
And a second?
Second.
Was it, what, can I just ask, well, after I had the?
It's been seconded, go ahead.
Was it posted on the website?
Yes.
Before this meeting? It was?
Yes. Kathy says yes. So, what else?
It was, I, I, I actually read it this morning. After I have to turn the pages around on my computer.
No, I, I read it too. I just wanted to make sure that it's accessible to the public.
We ordered chiropractic work for those that need it after reading it, um, the way it was posted.
Once I figure it out, I just have to hit the button and purge.
I'm having some serious computer issues, what can I say?
Accepted that. So, are there any other questions on the AP report for Jim? Then I will a- ask for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Will say they're passing unanimously, and I think, if you're just, give me one moment here. I wanted to let Joe Collins know with them. Budget transfers. Uh, would you like to?
I'd like to read them into the record and then ask that the board is elected, consider them and approve them. These are the budget transfers that, um, he gave me the authority to approve, you know, since the last meeting. Fire commission, ninety dollars from travel to dues. Fire commission, two thousand two fifty from fire security to equipment. Uh, the first one, by the way, was for DMV fees. The second one was for install lights and alarm system, uh, the Dog Ram thirty-five hundred. Fire commission, four fifty from travel to other supplies for, uh, the, the annual banquet. Two fifty from communications to other professional services for member physicals for the fire commission. Uh, for the elections, it was eight hundred dollars from professional education paying the office and operating expenses to cover the cost of the three budget referendums, which is now four. Uh, library, two hundred dollars from technical to library materials for newspaper subscriptions, books, and audiovisual equipment. Town clerk, three hundred sixty-eight dollars from office supply advertising, uh, for the legal notices for the referendums. And we moved, uh, seventeen dollars and ten cents from admin to board of finance, uh, to cover in board finance clerks for under budget payroll line, if that's an expeditement. This one was four hundred and fifty from payroll to other supplies for the fire commission. Two fifty from payroll to other professionals from the fire commission. And those were, um, due to a, the chief's understanding of his numbers and finance department's understanding of what was left in some light items was different. So, we had to move some money to make, uh, those accounts balanced for the expenses that are necessary.
My understanding is that you have the authority to move this money?
Based on, based on the motion that you made at the last meeting.
Yes.
You have the motion?
No.
Very good. So, we will move on. Ongoing business aid, review cannabis ordinance, but changes made. Has everybody had a chance to review that? Comments?
Being absolutely ignorant of legal presentations on this, um, it reads fine, but, um, I'm assuming it does what we intend. Adam, do you have a?
I want to ask. At this point, Adam, would you like to be, uh, front and center on this for a minute?
Well, the ordinance I saw was for a hearing officer, it doesn't mention cannabis. Is that what we're talking about there?
Yeah, so we, we already finished the other piece of it.
Right.
But the, the town attorney's recommendation was that we adopt, um, the, uh, the, because there's a requirement in the statute that requires us to have a hearing officer or hearing mechanism anytime we might impose fines. And the other half of the ordinance that we had finished with, um, you know, does, does have fines attached to it. So, this was the piece that he asked us to work out, and he had suggested that we model it after, um, the town of Woodbridge, which is what I did. We, we had used their, their, um, their piece of it for this.
And the, the town's attorney is comfortable with what it says here?
Yeah, so, so, I, I haven't had him look at this specific document, but this document is basically the document that he sent us and said, use this.
So, it came from him?
Right. And it looks like it's, it's a universal document. I mean, it's a hearing officer. If I, I read it right, that's why, this is why my, my question. For any, any citations we issue, be it with the cannabis or any other ones that we've made. I don't know if we have any ordinances where we ask, we issue. That's what it says under applicability.
Right.
So, it says that whenever the provision of the ordinance of the town will provide for enforcement by imposition of fines, the site teaching here, hearing, uh, procedure may apply.
So, it looks like it corrects an issue that we probably had going for decades. We never really, never had a, a, I, that I don't even call a system for that. So, I think maybe it's a good thing. It, it reads simple, I understand it, makes sense. I'm obviously comfortable with it, and I, and I'm glad it was written in, in a manner that it's, it's, uh, all-encompassing, not just for that one particular ordinance.
Quick, quick question, why do we send the names and addresses of hearing officers to the commissioner of motor vehicles?
Probably because that's what the statute requires.
Okay.
We can definitely, we definitely check that.
Let's find out.
If we're, if we're generally comfortable with this, our next step would be to, you know, take this to a town meeting at some point. Or, you know, it has to, has to have a public hearing.
Yes, I haven't researched this, but, uh, maybe because certain public officials are entitled to have blocked, uh, registration numbers.
All right.
Have what? I'm sorry. I couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, okay.
Public officials and law enforcement officers are entitled to block registration numbers.
Yeah, makes, makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're a hearing officer, that might apply.
Yep, okay.
My question is, do, do other towns have hearing officers? What about Manchester, East Hartford, Handover, Coventry? How do they?
I, I, I don't, I don't know for sure off the top of my head, Bob. But certainly, any, any town that has an ordinance that calls for the imposition of fines, would be required under the law to have a procedure for an appeal to that. Uh, and this is, this is the mechanism for that.
Okay, thank you. Do you see, so?
So, because we do have some questions, are there further questions regarding this? Because we have questions, uh, we will, it needs to be clarified. Uh, and the question of how surrounding towns have, if they have hearing officers, we can make a few calls. Uh, we should postpone this then and move this to the August meeting. Is that, uh, in agreement with everyone? And we'll get those answers, questions answered?
Yeah, um, I, I do want to say, though, that I'm, I'm not personally satisfied with this, um, with this hearing officer regulation or ordinance, so, uh, but I haven't had a chance, and I probably won't have a chance to look at the statutes and edit it as I would if I were writing it myself. And, and given that I'm not gonna support the cannabis ordinance, um, I'm not gonna support this, this one either, but that's, I think it's ill-conceived, frankly. I don't think we need any more laws that, that we impose fines on people for. The general statutes have lots of those.
Thank you. Uh, Michael?
No, I'm, I'm cool.
Uh, Bob Petro?
All I can do is volunteer, make some calls for you if you want.
Thank you. Bob Moore? All right, we'll postpone this for a month and we'll, we revisit it in August. Uh, moving on to six B, we're going back to talk about the Veterans Commission, uh, A, B, and C. The number of people on the commission, uh, it was, uh, and there was some discussion with the town clerk about having two Republicans, two Democrats, two unaffiliated. Do you feel that this board or commission needs to have that as a balance? Or do you feel that there, another balance would be appropriate? At the present time, we're having a hard time filling it with, uh, uh, people who have a desire, willing, or interest in serving. I have reached out to quite a few veterans and I have personally sent out personal letters, notes, and the interest form to veterans to see if we could get some responses, uh, women and men. I know I have, um, two more that I believe are coming in, uh, and I'm not sure if they're party affiliation. So, I'd like to have a little short discussion on party affiliation and how.
Pam, I don't, Pam, I don't think party affiliation has anything really relevant to this cause, personally.
I agree with Bob.
That's two. Bob Moore?
I'm sorry. My hearing failed me, but I didn't hear what he said.
He said he doesn't think that party affiliation has anything to, to do with those cause.
I agree, I just, I don't know if, 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 if they're required to have any, any minority, um, hang on this thing. If not, then I, yeah, what difference does it make?
Yeah.
And, and if you had a, if you had to do a minority issue, my comment would be.
Minority representation.
Minority representation, my, mine would be that no one party could have more than three. And that would allow.
Out of seven?
Out of, out of, yeah, out of the number you have.
Or six.
Or six.
Did we just decide that it would be seven rather than five?
We thought, yeah. I thought, yeah, we, we, I think we, we, we did say it's best to have an odd number, so I think.
Yeah, I had recommended three, and then five was, five was proposed because it's a, a number that you might get at least three or four to show up for. So, I, I would think five would be a significant, a sufficient number, a- and I really don't care if they're Republicans, Democrats, or all unaffiliated. It's, it's an advisory commission to deal with veterans' problems in town, and I think, uh, a group that volunteers to do that is gonna do what's in the best interest of our people.
Yep.
Regardless.
Added.
Nine without.
Bob Petro, hang on, please, uh, just one second. Uh, we have the added question that's been raised because of Mr. Toomey, and that is having alternates. We had not had that discussion in the past. Is there a comfort, uh, or a, uh, desire by this board to have alternates?
Five and two.
Five, yes, five and two?
I'm fine with that.
Michael says yes. Bob Petro is nodding, Adam?
Fine with that. I, I do want to say, I think, yeah, as a general rule, that there should be a minority representation, or rather, not a supermajority.
You have to be someone.
It should follow the rules for commissions generally, which means for a four, for a five-member board, no more than four can be one party. I recall.
I think that's reasonable.
Except for the board of collectmen.
I can live with that. I don't, I, I, I believe that people would be on this commission impartial, but if four and one is fine, it's fine with me.
Uh, Adam, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we establish a veterans' commission to consist of five regular members and two alternates. No more than four of the regular members to be of the same party registration.
I'll second that.
Quick comment? Go ahead, Adam, are you just?
To serve staggered terms of four years each.
So, we have to start with, um, some at two-years?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, let's, let's just address the first part of the motion that's before us. And then the number of people and the, you know, more than four of one party. Is there, um, any other comment on that? Motion is before. Then I'd say I ask for the vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Now, Adam, would you like to address the other part?
Um, I move that the terms of the members of the veterans' commission should be four-year terms staggered, and that in the initial appointment, three members serve for, be appointed to serve for four-years, two members be appointed to serve for two-years, so that the terms could be staggered.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Um, it's been presented.
With the alternate, wait a minute, let me amend that.
Add it?
With the alternate serving for four-years.
Right.
Both, uh, should one, are you saying both should be four-years, Adam?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for all of the, yeah.
Uh, comments?
Nope, I'm good with it.
Michael said yes?
Unless you want one to serve for two and one to serve for four and then elect, you know, but they're not, they're not elected, they're appointed, so.
Right.
Right.
Adam, I'm sorry, uh, Bob Petro, did you want to make a comment? Okay, then if there's, uh, we have a seconded one. Thank you. Then I'll ask for the vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Uh, the mission statement. So, we've had discussions about what a mission statement should be. Bob Petro?
I would like the new commission to make its own mission statement. Bring it to us.
And bring it back to us?
Yeah.
I agree with Bob.
Adam?
I agree.
Okay, then, Bob Petro, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the newly formed Veterans Commission form its own recommendation for mission statement to advise us the Board of Selectmen when we'll go from there.
Second.
Didn't work that very well, did it?
It came out fine.
Cleaned up for me. I'm hungry and I'm tired and I'm.
Right there with you.
Second it.
So moved and seconded. Is there any other further conversation on it? All in favor, then please say aye.
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 unanimously. Moving on to new business. Uh, I'd like to ask for a motion that we reappoint Carrie Concatelli as a municipal agent for the elderly and her term being a two-year terms beginning this July 1. Retroactive. Bob Moore moves and a second.
Second.
Bob Petro seconds. Is there any comments? We've been very impressed with the work that she's done and and the interaction certainly I've had with her on issues that have been brought before me. And I'd like to thank her for, for what she does for our town and those, of those people who are in need. Is there any further comment? If I'd say all in favor, please say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. Consider and possibly act on the Heritage Farm Master Site Plan. Monday, Bob, we missed you, but I'm glad things are okay. And Jim and I did go and attend, and we have asked them for a written master plan, not just a PowerPoint presentation. And it will be given to you between now and the August meeting. We ran on it. We're hoping that it'll be there. They're going to ask Sarah, the person that's directing that portion of it. And then it, we will be able to hopefully have the final discussion and move on the master plan, master site plan for our Heritage Farm.
Damn.
Michael?
Yeah, I'd also like to see included in this master plan some kind of an estimate for payback of the town's costs in developing this site. With a guesstimate at the very least of how many years it would take of having weddings and birthdays and such at that location before it pays off the two or three million dollars we're looking at here. It's a fairly ambitious plan with what would have to be a fairly long payback period. But I'd like to see some estimate as to when the town would actually be made whole again after investing in this.
Just a moment. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. And we will make that ask if there's a amongst the board members is agreement. Very good. Then we will talk, hopefully with some more information, we will talk again in August. Consider and act on being able to vote via Zoom. Jim, do you want to address that?
Well, I mean, this is a pretty big issue. I don't know if we're going to be able to get through it all and make any decisions tonight. You know, we did pull some information from the state's website, which we provided. Actually, it wasn't the state, it was, this is from the Department of Information Commission. But I also looked at, one of the things that we included here was Robert's Rules has updated some of their information to deal with electronic meetings. And it's, you know, I think it's the last page of this section. You know, and it talks about, you know, when they think, you know, it's appropriate. But I think, you know, it's very telling when you look at this chart that it's very difficult to, you know, essentially validate voters who are voting, you know, who are voting by electronic means. Fairly easy, I think, for boards and commissions, but for things like town meetings, I think it becomes very, very difficult. And, you know, their, you know, their their recommendation for remote meetings is either by voting by mail or voting by email. And I think if they were voting by either of those means, that somehow or another they'd have to be validated.
Yeah, it would, it would also take a horrendous amount of time if you're trying to do it during a meeting to validate, say, 25 people. I mean, that, that would be a two-hour process, just trying to validate 25 people. And it's, it is going to be a very difficult challenge to do that.
I haven't, you know, I've tried to do some research and I haven't easily found anybody that is, you know, accommodating things like, you know, town meetings. Which is what, which is really one of the things that we talked about most recently. Is that we had people that wanted to participate in a town meeting. They wanted to be able, you know, vote remotely. And we struggled with finding a good way to do that, but we felt that we worked on the public. That this is an important issue for them. So it's something that we're trying to do some research and wrestle with and see if we can find a reasonable way to accommodate that request. So it's here for discussion purposes. If anybody has, you know, thoughts, feelings, ideas, you know, that would be very helpful. I haven't found an easy solution that is not, you know, really time consuming.
The only thought I have is if it's a town meeting, there's a set motion that you're voting on, a specific motion. For that, I'm just wondering if you could have simply an absentee ballot. You can submit an absentee ballot, yes or no on, on the motion. I don't, I don't know if you can do that without. I, I just, that's just a thought. To me, that'd be the only way you could validate, truly validate that the person is an elector in the town of Bolton and they have a right to vote. Just a thought.
Why is, why is the agenda?
Say again, Bob, please?
How did we get on the agenda?
How did this get on the agenda? This was brought up by a constituent, actually a couple of our residents who wished to have us review voting on, for, not in person, but if they could not make it and they wanted to do it electronically. If it was going to be at a town meeting.
Well, that's what I thought, because there's quite a difference between Zoom and then eVotes. And what Bob just said about absentee ballots, some has to be considered along with everything else. I'm not sure it's possible. Again, I'll help Jim and do some research myself while I'm slowly recovering with my sore foot.
Thank you, thank you. That would, I mean, that would be helpful.
Yeah, there are, there are other eating platforms that are secure and can be used, could possibly be used to vote. But people might have to sign up for them ahead of time.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Like Teams or, you know, some of the other ones. Or use Teams. They don't use Zoom.
So I think, that's, I think that's a good point that certainly bears some looking into, thinking about your suggestion, Bob. I think the only problem with, you know, absentee voting, you know, ballots essentially for a town meeting is you're voting before you hear the discussion.
Right. I know.
Well, that, that's certainly imperfect, but at least you know that whoever's voting is an elector.
And looking on the, on the electronic side of pre-registering. Maybe that's possible, I don't know. You would have, all I would have, a person would have to register at least 24 hours before a town meeting, so that you would have that person's name in their, their email, so that you can verify who that person is. I think, that's the only thing I can think of. I don't know if there's a law.
But how do you?
I, I, I have no clue.
And that's the piece of.
And that's my problem is you could.
Well, what you would make them do is you'd make them pre-verify their account. And you would make them request the link and send them, send them the link before to join the meeting. What it does basically, they're sending, if they're holding a procedure by Zoom, or not by Zoom, by Teams, they make you send your email drop in. The one that you previously registered under as a participant. And they send you that link and it's a secure link. So if you join, you're identified as that person on that account. Then if you, you know, whether you're allowed to vote or not, you know, however you signify your your vote, it only can come from somebody who's logged in as that person. Presumably, you don't share your login credentials with somebody else, although you're on video.
But what, what if, what if 100 people sign up? Isn't that going to take staff time and? Yeah, to, to send out all of these individual links and everything? It's, it's not like where Kathy puts it out for everybody for our meeting. She'd have to individually send a link to every person that signed up. And, you know, you could wind up with 500 people signing up for a town meeting that way. And that would take a whole week.
And that would be bad because 500 people would vote on something that's important to the town.
No, that, that would be great. I'm just looking at the time it would take for her to send out the invitations. I'd love it if 500 people came to the town meetings. You know, it's a lot better than the meetings where you've spent millions of dollars with 50 people.
And we don't have, we don't hold them in rooms that, that would, that would be legal to have 500 people.
Right, but, you know, I.
I'm not even sure there is such a room in town.
We have had, we have had 400 people, we have had them against the fire code. It was held at, in the 1980s, in the elementary school cafeteria. And it is, it is very difficult when you have a large group. And it happens when people are impassioned over a particular item. We can get larger numbers, as we all know. And I do have the question in my head because I know how short-staffed we are at the present time in some of our departments, how difficult it would be with full staff, just trying to do it if there was a meeting of great interest. And so I would say, as an example, we talk about perhaps building a new town hall, and that would be of great interest, that we might have in excess perhaps 100 people that would have an interest in coming to town meeting on the issue, how difficult that would be to have remote voting.
I, you know, I, I think it would be a great thing if we could have 500 people at our meetings and, and have them have the ability to express their concerns and, and leave on things that in the past have been voted on by very few. I would love to see that, but I, like I said before, I think it would take staff weeks to send out those invitations individually.
Yeah, actually, I don't think so, because what people would do with every, either every year, every two years, or whatever, on some cycle, they would be required to register. And then there would be a master list, and you'd send out the invitations for every town meeting to that master list.
If that was possible, I'd be in favor of something like that.
I think what we might need to do is talk to our tech people and ask them what, what platforms are out there that might support that kind of, that kind of participation, rather than just say, oh.
It sounds like there are a lot of questions we're bringing up, which are very good ones. And at the late hour, at the present time, I would ask the board to have a an understanding that we will bring this back up again and have another discussion when we have some more information.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And I would say it's probably because somewhere we're short-staffed, that would probably be something we would look at in September. Is there a conflict level with the boards?
Maybe we could also tell, ask the people who have expressed an interest to do some research and, and provide us with any information they come up with.
Thank you. Very good, then we'll move on. We're on number eight, the First Selectman's Report, COVID-19. You've probably all been following the increased numbers of infection rate and that the two new variants that they're finding now are of a much milder, milder, milder form. Excuse me. There is not any recommendations for the town to act differently than they are presently. So that's the report I have there. I'll move on then to number nine, Administrative Officers' Report. You've got the monthly report in your packet. Are there any questions because of the late hour for Jim on his July highlights?
No.
Is there any one or two that you'd like to bring, that you'd like to address, Jim?
Well, you know, I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but we did, we did receive a notice of help award for the AARP grant for the pickleball course. And in fact, he'll send an email out today that she received the funds.
Adam is smiling. I think he wants to be invited.
It was a topic of conversation in my household recently. Where are the pickleball courts going to be?
Near, near the hockey ball courts.
At the senior center? At the present time, one pickleball court. You have to fight for it.
That I thought was, was pretty important. And we did manage to get the, if you happen to see the notices, the weight did receive treatment. The weight is open and that has been going well.
I would like to thank our resident state troopers, trooper who worked on July 4th, keeping the traffic and moving for Indian Mount Park and making it much easier on the neighborhood and their, their own personal driveway and parking situations. It was something very well done. And that I'd like to thank Kathy for designing and ordering the Vote Today signs, the bright pink ones. And I'd like to thank those on the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance who helped get out the signs, and we'll get them back in. And.
Tomorrow, no.
Tomorrow, not tonight. Oh, no, come on. I picked up three because they had been knocked down by the big winds that came through very rapidly this afternoon. And a special thank you to a town citizen, Amanda Gordon, who stood out and waved at traffic before, and before work and after work. I went and joined her this afternoon, so with a homemade sign, please vote. So thank you for that. And so if there's no other questions on his monthly report, we'll move on to the STEAP grant. The application is due for any STEAP grants on August 15, 2022, with a 20% match. Jim, would you like to address the Small Town Economic Assistance Program?
So we did send out the guidelines as part of your packet, so that you could take a look at them. And it was our hope to have, you know, a meaningful discussion about something that the Board of Selectmen would like us to, you know, potentially move forward and try to get a grant for. If you look at the, the chart, this is on page 813. You know, Bolton is one of those towns. Bolton is one of those towns that is steep eligible and you do not have to opt in. But there are other towns that would have to opt in. Um, so so that is certainly one of the positive things. There's a a whole bunch of criteria. Um, but I think it's important that we do apply for something. Um, I I don't have any strong ideas or opinions about what we should be looking for. Um, it was it was my hope that you as a a group of leaders might have uh some great ideas.
I have two.
Mr. Moore?
They may act great, but I have two ideas. One is the which we talked about for decades, uh, the jury uh septic system that would help the issue for a town hall. The troopers, the library, and certainly Heritage Farm. Uh, it would allow all these uh the the three marginal systems we currently have put them to rest and actually able to have toilet facilities at at the Heritage Farm. That's one possible. The other one. Jim and I were banging this thing around, and it kind of put a bug, but over it over in back of the uh senior center where the uh Y was, you have the two offices that were going to be oh getting ready so we have a meeting space, perhaps. That can be made. Don't know if 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 engineering is possible. We made it to one large space with a divider so that you can have a a big meeting space into small and medium space in 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 that one area. And you could also use it since it's handic and it's handicap accessible. And it would help, you know, it could help alleviate one of the issues with the uh uh polling places. So if you have a divider, maybe if if I don't know if it'd work, you know, two entrances, two exits, you might be be able to have two polling places there. But this is tough. And and it's I have no idea what we're talking about in money, just.
So we're not really ready to to advocate an engineering review.
It would be an architect.
You'd have an architect just come up with it with a a a concept.
It's for August fifteenth.
They should be able to do that.
I I think I could pull him up, Steve.
Yeah.
I mean, we we to maximize that space at a time where we're really screwed for space is you know, that probably would be the first priority. And the other ones, if we can pull it off, if it can be done, I don't know. I'm I that you know, I knew no, I most of those schools, their their support structures are that's you all have that damn uh hallway, but.
Well, that's but that's a newer section. That may that may be steel.
Oh, okay. See, yeah, that's just it. Yeah, that could then 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 you could go a clear speed across. Yeah, or just put a different support. But anyhow, that's 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 my I'm passing those thoughts along.
Good thoughts.
Would the board like to first let's start with the first one, uh, community septic system. Uh, my question would be, I I I know it's been on the drawing board for a long time. Are there any plans in?
I I think that one is pretty darn close to being shovel-ready.
Right. That one that one has been protested, laid out. That was literally ready to go.
Board have it.
Other than the cost, you just have to have enough data cost.
Does the board want to uh talk about that? Michael?
I'd be in favor of that. I'd be in favor of both of them, but I think that one would be a a priority that we probably couldn't handle with a line item change, if you know what I'm getting at. I think the other one, we might be able to fund out of operational budget where the septic system, we never could fund out of our operational budget.
You're talking.
Bob DiPietro?
Yep, I agree.
The other project that's been discussed, I I agree with the septic system is is a probably a priority, but the other one that's I think has been discussed and maybe even planned out is is recreational fields, soccer fields and or um baseball fields in the past.
I can. I will not.
Soccer field and the track. Is that what you're talking about, Adam?
Yeah.
High school?
Those kinds of things. Because all of those things have been discussed and I think even laid out.
So this grant, the maximum is still five hundred, but the this in the recent history, they have not been giving out full five hundred grant awards. They've been giving out lesser amounts so that they can give to more towns. Um.
The soccer fields and the track would probably be closer to a million, wouldn't they?
Yeah, closer to two.
The high school project is two, but do you remember what what the uh what the work at Harret Park was to improve the fields there?
No.
I I know that uh
About that, I'm sorry.
We were looking at uh about three hundred, three and a quarter to three fifty for the I think. Community septic system.
Yeah, I think the septic system.
That was that was pretty close.
So from the background that I've had working through this STEAP grant uh with the other towns that I had represented, um athletic fields fell to the bottom of the pile.
Right.
Uh, it took a very long time and a lot of strings to be able to. Actually, that's a wrong term. A lot of uh uh complicated negotiations uh to get it passed uh to get money. And all this money comes out of the bond commission uh and has each project, each part is approved. Uh, something like um the septic system, which is a health concern, uh, has usually a much higher priority than athletics. Adam, I'm really enjoying your stand above your head.
It's colorful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's cool.
Much better, much better view. It's been enjoyable. Thank you. Uh, so uh uh from as just a member of this board, I would uh my recommend my recommendation would be to put the money in for the septic system because it is shovel-ready. And the room divider, we can we can fly for next year. We can apply every year for a STEAP grant.
Oh, I that's been on my list for a very long time, and I think it's it, you know, we've been postponing it and 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 patching the septic systems together. So with that note, I would make a, you know, do you need a motion? I'll make a motion. We recommend we go forward with a STEAP grant for our community septic system um for the um municipal buildings. Yeah, the town center.
Uh, second that.
I have um information. Thank you for the motion in a second uh that I received today that the thresholds were changed in two thousand and seventeen for prevailing wage. And currently it remained at a hundred thousand dollars for renovations or repair, but it got increased to a million dollars for new construction.
Right.
So in this case, the septic is new construction, and it would not fall and it'd be under a million dollars, so it would not fall under prevailing wage. But something like the repair of ball fields would fall under prevailing wage. So I just wanted to add that because we had been discussing at the farm the other night. So I hope that helps one hundred thousand and to one and one million.
Yes, it will be under prevailing. So our our original cost was based on prevailing. So we're.
So it will. Well, and of course, the cost now has increased, skyrocketed on so much of this uh materials and all. So we'll have to get a, I think, a new estimate, cost estimate, but um, does the board want to have a further discussion on this, or would they like, we have a motion before us? Is there any further discussion on the septic system applying? Bob DiPietro?
Yeah, I too want to say I will not support uh athletic fields in any way, shape, manner, or form. Will not. I don't think it's wise money, but will support a septic request for STEAP grant for health, health and septic. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Adam Teller, do you have a comment? Mike Aramita?
No, I'm good.
Okay, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor of a Kathy has the motion, but I will I will just I'll put it down uh in my own words uh that we apply for a STEAP grant for the multiple-use city.
Community septic.
Community septic system.
For 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 town municipal buildings.
For this year, uh, and make the application. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Bob, for coming up with that idea. Um is there's nothing else we have to do with that, right?
Nope, that's it.
It does require twenty percent match, as long as you all understand that.
Oh, yeah.
Go find the money. Uh, the TRIP grant. Jim?
So this, uh, we don't have to do anything about this place, really more for informational purposes. This is a grant that's going to be coming out. It's going to be very competitive. Uh, only fifty percent of the eligible towns will be given grants. But what's interesting about this grant is that I I think we'll be recommending that we apply either for the uh the culvert slash bridge replacement either on Eba Road or Lyman Road um based under this grant. Um, you know, memory. So we we know about this because the Capitol Region Council of Governments will administer this on behalf of the state uh for its region, and they've asked for some input on the grant criteria. And what's interesting about this grant is many of the grants that we could apply for for those types of projects require um require them to be at least be feeder roads. Uh, and it looks like for this grant, uh, that is not going to be the case, which might allow us to keep to have a grant opportunity for especially for Ly, uh, you know, for the for Lyman Road, which is certainly not a feeder road. Uh, it would be, you know, it'd be one of those things that would be way down uh in the in the hierarchy when we did apply for a grant. But in this case, it may be so maybe more on equal playing field. And the other interesting piece about the TRIP grant is that, you know, it it's a shovel-ready project. We got that ready with uh funds out of the administrative budget. So it's planned. All we would have to do is update COF. And the way that it looks like this grant is going to go is those funds that we have spent getting this project shovel-ready would be considered our match for the for the for the grant. So I I think, you know, once this comes out, we'll probably have thirty or sixty days to get the grant application in, but I I did want to share a I'm as excited as you can be about a grant with this one because I think it's an opportunity that's not going to come around very often.
Do you do that?
No, it really just was for information. I I was excited enough about it. I wanted to share with you all.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to. Is there any questions about the TRIP grant? See, then we'll move on to the other. Um, would you like, Jim, would you like to talk about the two resolutions?
Yeah, but there was one other that I added after we talked earlier. I think Pam and I learned uh on our on our meeting last evening that the grant applications for the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving have opened and are online. So we'll be looking at probably trying to do something with that as well. Uh, the maximum project was ten thousand. I thought, yeah, I thought the teacher said ten. Okay. But we'll we'll be looking for something appropriate. So we have two other items that we would like for the Board of Selectmen to act on. I think Kathy said one of them, one of the resolutions we dealt that we sent a supplemental package, and this is a resolution having to do with the account balance for revenues for the student activity fund. Uh, and this is a corrective action that's necessary as a result of audit findings. And I believe this has been an audit finding for the last couple of years, and the Board of Education and Superintendent have actually communicated with Jill, been with our auditor, and have agreed on this language of the resolution to solve the issues of the student activity fund.
All right, we so um a motion would be appropriate to adopt that resolution.
Right.
Also move.
A second? I need a second. Uh, Mike Aramita, thank you. And discussion? Very none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. And the motion uh.
I abstained.
Motion carried unanimously?
Oh, I abstained.
No, I abstained.
I'm sorry. And I'm sorry, four four in favor and one abstention.
Right.
So I'd like the board's uh approval on honoring Bruce N. Amundsen on his retirement, and I would like to read with your indulgence um this proclamation, whereas Bruce N. Amundsen Crewman III for the Town of Bolton retired on May first, twenty twenty-two after over forty-one years of outstanding service for the Town of Bolton, and whereas Bruce began his career with the town as Crewman II and through diligent effort and dedication advanced to Crewman III, and whereas he has performed his duties throughout the years of service in a conscientious and responsible manner, and whereas he has consistently responded with ingenuity, imagination, and foresight to the duties and responsibilities given to him, fulfilling them with accuracy and competency. And whereas Bruce has set an example of dedication to principle, which has been an inspiration to his fellow employees. And whereas he in all of his endeavors have reflected great credit upon the Bolton Highway Department and the Town of Bolton, therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Selectmen do hereby extend Bruce N. Amundsen our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to the Bolton Highway Department and the Town of Bolton. Our congratulations on his well-earned retirement, and our best wishes to him and his family for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Topped by the Town of Bolton's thirteenth day of July, twenty twenty-two by the Town Board of Selectmen. Uh, listed below are uh spots for the signatures of the five Board of Selectmen. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll move to accept.
Through moves to accept, and Bob Moore seconds?
Yep.
Comments?
Bruce, uh, affectionately known as the MacGyver of the Highway Department, who could figure out how to put things together that nobody else had a clue. So.
He's great.
You know, I, he he will be sorely missed. Good guy, good, great worker, and and a good friend, too.
Yep. And he personally has helped me tremendously.
Is there any other comments? Thank you for the the kind remarks, and uh we have a motion on the table, and it has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
It passes unanimously. So it'll be here, and I would ask that you would please come to the town hall and when as soon as possible to please sign the resolution.
I'd give him a new Dodge Charger.
Yeah, it's it's a the Matchbox size. It's it's very attractive and um in our hearts, we would love to give him a new Dodge Charger.
Yeah.
Um.
To go back to three. I mean, I'm sorry, you have to go back to, yeah, three approval minutes.
That's all it's in mind.
I made a motion to move it to August.
Yeah, that's right. He moved it to August.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Good job.
Yeah, all that's left is ten.
Oh, right. Hey, Bob.
You know, I've been through this crap before.
I don't think it's disruptive.
I don't think so.
You know.
One more time, another little yard. Uh, so thank you very much. We will uh have more minutes to approve. We'll have a big package, and we will do that in August. Uh, so at this time, uh, I would like to thank everyone that is with us online and ask that you uh we will be going into executive session to discussion on personnel evaluation uh for the interim administrative officer. And so I would ask, it's just time that I need a motion to go into executive session.
If you want me there, you have to.
To include Kathy.
And Jim.
Jim.
So I'd need a motion before us and to add those items, Bob?
So.
With the inclusion of.
Of both Jim and Kathy.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.